Okay, so we can call the meeting to order. And first up is adoption of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added or changed?
I move for adoption.
Larry? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then moving on to the council table for information. James? Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I just have a question.
Chris?
What does transfer of water allotment mean? E F T forty twenty-two?
That is the water license for purchasing?
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, receiving for information, opposed, that is carried. And then moving on to the cash and investment summary for October third first. Jim, or no, that's Chris.
Hi.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Alright. Delegations, so... Not here. Okay, well, we... We can just keep moving, because I can't make somebody present a delegation if they're not here. So let's move on to B, the sanitary sewer master plan update. Uh-oh.
There we are.
Pull back. Yes?
Yeah. We're going back to the R C M P.
We were leaving you.
We're never mad at the guy with the gun, so don't worry about it.
Right by this lovely microphone.
Go to the next.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
You can use that collar, make your call.
Oh, she'll be okay.
Very nice mustache.
Thank you. I apologize out of time for this.
Is that your whole Movember thing, Chris?
What?
Is that the whole month?
No. I shaved twice.
Oh, yeah, okay. Today?
No. For the month.
This is a week. Pretty good, eh?
I could never do that. People dislike it so much, I think I'm gonna keep it, actually. Yeah. Pardon? I didn't ask you. Can I keep my mustache? The no actually means a yes.
You look like one of my drill corporals. It's gotta go.
Maybe we should vote on it.
Alright, let's start. So, welcome. Is all this the paper version of your electronic version?
So what I've kind of gathered for you this evening is, first of all, the Q two report, which is the document on top. And then the second document that I provided is our crime gauge. So the first, the first page is actually the Southern Alberta District's R C M P detachment's average crime gauge. I just wanted to, to provide that copy as well, to show our, the Red Cliff Municipal Crime Gauge is the second page. Just to kind of show how well we're doing here at the detachment locally. And third, the third kind of book that I provided is our calls for service for the year of 2020. So for the entire twelve-month period of 2020, this breaks down how many calls we've received, what's our busiest day, what's our busiest hour, how many, how many files each member is taking on. So I wanted to, I wanted to provide this because it's a really good snapshot of what, what our, our year looks like. What kind of calls are we, are we getting? And then for scheduling purposes, this is the document that I use when I'm creating a schedule or when I'm looking for additional resources and manpower for certain times or, or days. Like, as you can see here, this graph, you know, the reds are the, our busiest times, right? Thursday, Fridays are busiest days with two hundred and two calls each respectively. So it's, yeah, it's, it's kind of interesting to have, to see what 2020 looked like for us.
So how do you want to go through this?
I can start with the quarter two report if you'd like.
Okay, and is that what you sent us?
Looks like some of those. That's, yeah, that's my community letter to you folks. I didn't bring the letter with us. That's just what I sent to everyone.
No, that's fine.
Yep. But the quarter report is in. It is, yeah. The quarter report should be the second.
We have electronic, and then these other two are new.
So I'll just introduce myself. I'm Sergeant Alrevard. I was just promoted last week, actually, to the Bow Island Detachment Commander position. However, I'll be in the Red Cliff acting position for the foreseeable future until Sean Maxwell comes back or doesn't come back, or there's a decision made. So I've been told it could be upwards to about a year, potentially, that I'll be in that seat. So looking forward to the challenge, but, but you're stuck with me for probably a year.
So what happened to the Bow Island Sergeant?
Neil Bailey got promoted to Lac Lebiche.
That's a problem.
In some people's eyes. Yeah, so Neil's in, Neil's been in, in Lac Lebiche since June. So I acted for him in Red Cliff for a couple of months, and then Sergeant Cordy began acting in that position. Traffic, he was with traffic services. And traffic services would only allow him to stay for a certain amount of time. And so they sent him back to traffic, and then I got bumped into, into Sean's chair.
Sergeant Cordy still here, then?
He is, yeah. He's back in the traffic services section, yeah. So where's Staff Sergeant Maxwell? He's on long-term leave. Yeah, he's been gone since April.
That's why we've had different people doing presentations, is because he hasn't been here for...
I don't remember anybody else doing it. Yeah, I'm confident it's gonna be me until the new staff sergeant, if there is a new staff sergeant announced. Till that date comes, it's, my fingers crossed, it's going to be me. So our senior management team in, in Airdrie with Southern Alberta District has told me it's, it's mine until it's decided on what's happening with the position, so.
Okay.
So quarter two, the first page you'll see there is just our community consultations page. The things that we had done in the community, things that we had attended. So I, I presented at the Southeast Alberta Rural Crime Watch A G M back in September, and then I met with Phyllis and Barry and Shannon back in September as well. Just introduce myself. The second page is our community priorities. So priority one is policing community relations and police visibility. So as COVID continues to hinder our ability to engage with our community, however, I assign each Red Cliff member a school. So that's been one of the big pushes that I've had, starting in, beginning of September, is that each member that we have is assigned to a school, and then they start building relationships with schools and administrations. And that we really enhance our, our patrolling in the morning bell times and in the afternoon bell times. It's, it's a mandatory, so between eight and nine, our officers who are working day shift aren't allowed to be in the office unless it's like for exigent purposes. If they have a file or something, then it has to be completed. Everybody has to pick a, a school zone or a school area and patrol that. Yeah, I'm really, I'm really hoping that things start to relax and we're able to get out in the community more. That's, we have a bunch of things hopefully planned. The next thing we plan is I want to do a stuff a cruiser campaign. So I'm, I've reached out to the Medicine Hat and Area District Food Bank and potentially chat TV news about doing a stuff the cruiser for, for Christmas, for Christmas food drive, and doing it outside of Family Foods. So that's, fingers crossed, it's gonna be able to go ahead. We have a kind of a short window, but, but I'm hoping that's, that's something that we can definitely get on top of. Our priority two is enhancing road safety. So we continue to work on traffic safety and enforcement initiatives within the town of Red Cliff. Our members will continue working in partnership with our traffic services, Alberta sheriffs, and our community peace officer in joint forces operations throughout the year. In the second quarter of 2021, the Red Cliff R C M P have committed to enhance school zone patrols during the morning and afternoon school times. These efforts have reduced traffic complaints in school zones substantially. And school administrations have also provided feedback stating that the enhanced visibility has definitely been noticed. Currently, Red Cliff has one member trained in the use of radar and laser speed detection. And this is all due to COVID canceling our training abilities. So we have had no in-class training for the last sixteen months. And then our third party is crime reduction. Prolific property crime offenders in the town of Red Cliff appear to be dwindling. So we've noticed a reduction in our prolific offenders living in the community. We usually get our information from probation with regards to conditions checks and curfew checks and all that stuff, but our list is very, very short right now. So we, we feel from intelligence and, and information that we've received, a lot of our prolific offenders that were living in Red Cliff has since departed either into Medicine Hat or other parts of the province. We have an extremely good working relationship with our Alberta Law Enforcement Response Team, Regional Property Crime Unit. Most recently, in the second quarter, Red Cliff R C M P investigated a string of break-in enters to local businesses. Through the hard work of our members, two individuals were identified and charges were laid. The investigation also resulted in the recovery of over a hundred thousand dollars worth of property to the business. So, yeah, we actually got into a pursuit with one of those individuals all the way to Steller. So I was one of them involved, and, yeah, we chased him all the way to Steller. We had the Calgary Police Helicopter op, we had numerous detachments assisting, and we were able to take him to custody. So they ended up, they had stolen two Dodge trucks, two flat-deck trailers, a Bobcat, a motorcycle, a whole bunch of items from inside of the businesses, so it was a really good, really good day. We have also teamed up with the Alert Regional Property Crime Unit to continue our efforts in proactive crime reduction strategy. And most recently, we have introduced the bait vehicle, bait asset program into the area. So about eighteen months ago, I reached out to our K Division Auto Theft Team in Edmonton and requested they come down and provide us with training in the use of bait vehicles. And they agreed. I wrote a business case, and they came down and provided training for about six of us with the Alert Medicine Hat Regional Prime, Regional Property Crime Reduction Team. And we went out guns ablaze, and we had a Ford F three fifty truck that we, that we staged in the area, and it was pretty much stolen and accessed right away. And so we continue with the bait assets. It ranges anything from a Ford F three fifty to flat-deck trailers with skidoo's that are rigged with GPS locators. We have generators, we have, we did bicycles. We've, we've rigged up bicycles with GPS, and we've staged bicycles and had surveillance on them. We were unsuccessful, but that could be a positive or a negative. I guess it depends who you are. It's been really successful, and we've had that, the asset here in Red Cliff a number of times, and all throughout the county and, and in, in the city of Medicine Hat as well. I do have a U S B video that I'd be willing to share of the first theft of the bait truck, and it actually happened out here on, is it trans, the Highway Frontage Road.
South Highway or North Highway?
South Highway, right in front of the, that strip there.
South Railway?
Or no, the, the construction business right at the end of that strip of buildings there, right beside the railroad tracks.
Old Amron? Where Amron is?
Yes, Amron. We had the truck parked right in front of Amron, backed in thirty-five minutes. So what happens is when the bait vehicle is accessed, when the door opens, I get a notification to my cellphone. It, it rings and it says, "The door's open." So then I can transition to an iPad that's provided to me and basically just watch the truck get stolen. So on this, this occasion, entered the vehicle and started the vehicle by shoving a screwdriver in there. You can see in the video if I'm willing to play, or if you're willing to let me play it. And, yeah, it's just an interesting video because it gives us a really good snapshot of what these people do when they steal a vehicle. And basically, they just drove around all night and smoked methamphetamine. In the morning, so I was up all night tracking this thing on my iPad, on the iPad, and I have the capabilities on the iPad that I can shut the vehicle down in motion, completely kill, kill the engine and everything. And that's what we did. I would buy rattlesnake, rattlesnake dams. We had two R C M P members waiting, and I shut the vehicle off, and it rolled into the ditch, and two occupants of the vehicle were taken into custody. So those are some of the things that we're doing, and they've been very successful for us. Assuming thirty-five minutes for it to get stolen is fairly quick in a town this size? Pretty quick. Yeah. Pretty quick. And with that, we also had vehicle entries. We staged the truck with a number of exhibits in our exhibit locker that were due for destruction. We would, we would put as props inside the vehicle and itemize everything, and we could also lay charges for entering a motor vehicle theft. We had everything identified, and we were successful in, in arresting some individuals for possession of stolen property because they had stolen items from our truck. In one instance, about six months before this individual was charged, he was actually arrested for breaking enter to a business out on the Bull's Head Trail. And some of the property that we recovered from him, I used in the truck. And just by coincidence, he stole property again that he had originally. Anyways, yeah, it's pretty funny. Yeah, like I said, the, the prolific offenders in Red Cliff are starting to drop, and we're keeping a very tight leash on the ones that we do have here. We're doing, often out doing curfew checks, conditions checks, making sure these people are abiding by their curfews, that they're not abusing substances, that they're just trying to be good people in, in society. So I think it's been successful. So the next page is crime stats. And that can kind of be better detailed in, in the document that I gave you here. It's got everything broken down in this, in this booklet. So as you can see, compared with the, with Southern Alberta, you're seeing a five percent decrease in crime, there's a six percent increase in persons crime, one percent increase in other criminal code. But when you look at Red Cliff's stats, from January to September of this year, over 2020, we're seeing a decrease of twenty-one percent across the board. Persons crime is down eight percent, the big one is property crime, down nineteen percent. And other criminal code charges are forty-one percent decrease, which is passive. Six fewer break-in enters, two fewer theft of motor vehicles. So when you, when you look at that and you, six fewer break-in enters, people being victimized in the community, houses being entered, businesses being entered. It's a very promising stat. And if you go into the next pages, everything's just broken down by, by each offense, from homicides to fail to comply with conditions. Another, another trend or point of interest on here that I'd like to point out is our, our persons crime have dropped to twenty percent, including a forty-four percent decrease in spousal abuse. That's a really, really good statistic for us. That's a, that's a huge drop in a very serious and worrisome trend. In other parts of the, the province, they're seeing increases, and we've seen, we've seen a forty-four percent decrease. So our municipal overview, so our human resources category. We have eight established positions for police officers in Red Cliff detachment. We have four, or sorry, five that are working right now. We do have some soft vacancies. We have a member off on long-term disability. We have another member off on parental leave, and then, of course, Staff Sergeant Maxwell is off. And we also are down another corporal as well who's on long-term disability. So we're, we're down to four, four people right now. I guess a good thing is, is with my promotion, it opens up my corporal's position, which I've sent in the documents this afternoon, to get the ball rolling on filling that spot as soon as possible. And so on page six is a municipal overview of financial statements. With our absences and, of course, COVID going on right now, we're, we're doing pretty well compared to a lot of other detachments in Southern Alberta specifically. We're maintaining staffing levels. We're not seeing a, a reduction in manpower. We, I've been able to create a schedule that, that does a pretty good job of covering everything we need covered. So, so far, we have one individual who's not getting his COVID vaccine, however he's the accommodation. So what's gonna be happening is K Division Headquarters is gonna be sending us rapid tests that we can send home with the member, and he has to take a rapid test every time, before he comes to his set of work, which is thankfully, because it's hard to lose, hard to lose a member, creates a fairly large role. So the fact that they're being able to, to give us some rapid testing and to enable that member to continue working is, is huge. And then on page seven of seven, there's just a, an overview of the human resources. That's kind of, that's kind of all I got, unless there's any questions, yeah.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask?
Sergeant Revard?
Go ahead.
You mentioned that spousal abuses were on the way down, but they, correction, wrong, but they kind of spiked during COVID anyways, didn't they? We didn't see a huge spike. There was a slight increase, but it wasn't, it wasn't a large spike like we saw in other jurisdictions. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Seven question, because you mentioned that you got four officers that are out right now?
Yeah, so we have three officers under the, the municipal detachment and one officer out of the rural provincial detachment.
Okay.
So Red Cliff has a combination of both provincially funded and municipally funded officers.
How do you, like, fill those three spots, like, with manpower then, just to, you don't?
We just stretch them thin. Yeah, I mean, one of the positions is Staff Sergeant Maxwell. Unfortunately, when we have an N C O or a supervisory position that goes vacant because of a soft vacancy, typically we take a constable from the front line and we put them into an acting position. So we've had to do that. However, we are right now currently in a hubbing project, pilot project, with the Bow Island detachment. So there's four constables and an N C O from that detachment that we have built an integrated schedule. So, I mean, there's pros and cons to the hubbing project. However, it allows us for more manpower and better coverage.
Yeah.
So we, right now, we're striving for three members to always be on, whether it's a day shift or a night shift. One member would typically be responsible for Bow Island. Bow Island's on a very busy detachment, so Red Cliff is more or less getting three members, when typically we're working with two. And usually, some shifts, we have five, four or five members on. Just depends on where the schedule falls and where our vacancies kind of hit.
Are there still, like, because my dad was retired from Red Cliff here, but that was way back.
Yeah.
Are there still times where there's like one person on at night?
Never.
Never?
Never. My, my, so my minimum is three.
Okay.
The guy, I will not let our members work unless there's three or more.
So I'd like to hear.
Yeah.
But they can get spread out?
They can. They can, yeah.
Like if there was something in Bow Island, that could be one person.
There could be something in Hilda.
Yeah.
It's just our geographical area is so large that, you know, knock on wood, we don't see, I think Foremost had seven calls for service in the entirety of last year. Bow Island doesn't have a lot of calls for service, so we're lucky we're not sharing resources with a busy spot. But needless to say, if, if something major happens, you know, Elkhart, we had the missing girl this summer. We had a drowning on the South Saskatchewan. Luckily, we had resources from Bow Island and Red Cliff working, and we were able to manage that with the resources we had. Yeah.
Well, interestingly, at the A U M A, we had a meeting with some R C M P staff.
Yep.
The next people behind us were Foremost, and that was their concern, is they kind of get forgotten in the scheme of things.
Yeah, and, and I completely understand where they're coming from. They had a very old building, Foremost detachment building. It was, it's literally falling apart. And, you know, for a very small community that's had a, they had an R C M P member living in that detachment as a residence, and they've had a member living in that detachment for probably forty years. And so now you've taken the member out of the detachment, and you've closed the detachment. It's, it's a bit of a hard pill to swallow for a lot of the local residents in Foremost because they've been used to having their own local mountain there, right? But it's way above my pay grade. However, you know, when you look at a town that has seven calls per year, you break that down into an R C M P member's salary, you're paying thirteen thousand dollars per call, right? If you, if you look at it that way, and I mean, it's being fairly critical, but you have to weigh what's, what's financially liable to, right? So.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, and I guess we can go through the, the extras that you gave us.
For sure, yeah, and my business card's on the front of all those documents that I gave you guys. If there's any questions, concerns, send me an email, give me a call, contact me directly. I, I never mind an email or a phone call ever.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
If somebody would like to move, we receive it. James, move, we receive. Sergeant Revard, report. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Okay, then the sanitary sewer master plan update. Joel?
Yes, good evening. It is Joel. Good evening, Your Honor, Council, Administration. Unfortunately, I can't compete with that mustache or a helicopter chase story, but we can roll up our sleeves and we can talk wastewater tonight.
We got your Movember going, so that's good.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. My, my daughters keep telling me to shave my beard and I'd have a good look, but we'll see. Keeping the beard for now, so. Alright, yes, I'm Joel Swatsky from StanTech Consulting, here to present the sanitary sewer master plan project. Couldn't have done this project without the strong team that I had behind me, that being Johnny Key, our lead hydraulic modeler and process engineer, and Ahmed Sharaf, who is also a hydraulic modeler and did much of the report writing. So thanks to those two and many others. So, on the agenda, the next slide, we'll go through a quick safety moment, as we often or always do at StanTech, then the introduction and background, and then we'll review the two components that we analyzed as a part of this report, the existing system analysis and recommendations, as well as the wastewater disposal alternatives analysis and recommenda, analysis and recommendations. I'm just gonna turn this up here a little bit. I think we're maxed out, alright? So the safety moment, indoor air quality, do I really need to clean my air ducts? That's where I go to first every, every fall. Oh, it seems a little dusty in the house. I better pay five hundred bucks to get all my vents cleaned. But you don't necessarily have to do that. You can, and, you know, it's expensive, and the air, your air furnace filter or your air conditioning filter will clean out most or take out most of the dust. And so a couple of other things that you could do, you could put a vent or a filter on each of your hot air vents. You could look at the, the cracks by your air duct where dust could build up. Or you could call an H VAC technician to look at your furnace. You get much more value from a furnace service, which will then inspect the air ducts as well, or some of the ducts. Food for thought for the coming winter. So the sanitary sewer master plan, background. Most of you saw me here in August. I think we have two new council members, as I understand. So the town of Red Cliff, as you know, has a limit of a hundred and sixty-five liters per second that you guys can dispose of wastewater to the city of Medicine Hat. Anything over top of that contravenes your agreement with the city, and you'll pay maybe surcharges, et cetera. And that's one reason why the, the town installed a surge tank this last summer, to hold back and attenuate some of the peak flows to maintain that just maximum discharge rate of a hundred and sixty-five liters a second. Previous studies, the town has made some progress. And then earlier this year, they retained StanTech to complete the sanitary sewer master plan. So it was completed in two phases. The first phase was the preliminary review, which was completed April to August, and I presented to Mayor and Council on August sixteenth. And then, and then the second phase was a detailed review, which took place from mid-August to mid-November, and I'm here today to present the final report. There is two distinct components of the master plan, which is important to note. The first component is the analysis on the existing system. How is the existing sanitary sewer collection system performing under current flows and also under thirty-year flows, thirty-year design flows? And then component two is a wastewater disposal analysis. How are we getting rid of the wastewater? Are we still going to Medicine Hat? Are we going to treat it in our, in our own local wastewater treatment plant, et cetera? So the bit of the background, in the preliminary review, phase one, um, the population analysis, the population recommendations were looked at. And, um, their, the recommendation is consistent with past studies, has a growth rate of one point one seven percent for an additional population of about twenty-eight hundred people. So with that population and our average per capita sewage flow rate for residential, commercial, industrial, we have a total projected wastewater of thir- almost thirty-two hundred cubic meters per day, which translates into the two hundred and ten liters per second. So that's the key number. Maximum discharge rate of a hundred and sixty-five allowable by the city, peak thirty-year flow rate of two-ten liters per second. So there's a difference. What are we going to do? Um, and through the sewer flow recommendations, the design guidelines were, were looked at, and some, uh, some differences were, were used in this analysis, and they were outlined in the preliminary review report. So the existing system analysis. So with that, Johnny and Ahmed took the, the latest model, hydraulic model, updated it, um, calibrated it, included the new infrastructure, and the twenty-twenty-one modeled wet weather peak flow was modeled at a hundred and sixty-one liters second. It's right at that limit. Um, so there's, there's not much room. The, the existing surge tank will help attenuate those peaks. However, it only captures downtown and the south portions. It doesn't capture the northwest sewer shed, which I'm gonna go through in a bit. So with the south sewer shed, including downtown, the capacity was looked at, and good news is, it's, it's good. You'll see some red manholes if you blow up that figure. Um, they, they surcharge slightly over, um, what is, I guess, um, desirable. However, they're well within the tolerance. So no recommendations for the south sewer shed or existing system. However, the northwest sewer shed has some problems. It experienced surcharging and flooding and is one reason that the city gate has seen up to a hundred and seventy-eight liters per second flow, specifically in two thousand and thirteen. The last bullet point there, it's a bit of a mouthful, but the current INI, which is inflow and infiltration, stormwater getting into the sanitary, in the northwest sewer shed is point seven liters per second per hectare. The, the current design guidelines are point two liters per second per hectare, and they're pretty conservative. The south sewer, the south sewer shed is point one four. In a typical community, you're gonna see about point one. So that's like five to six times, um, what the south is and seven times what a normal community should be. So it's way up there. And a key here is if you bring down that northwest sewer shed INI, the stormwater getting into your sewer system, if you bring that down to normal levels, you will see a hundred and thirty-nine, a hundred and forty liters per second going through city gate, peak wet weather flow. So you actually save that twenty liters a second. Is that five years? Is that ten years without doing anything? Albeit, you'll have to, um, do some improvements in the northwest area. But to pay rates to the city of Medicine Hat for treating stormwater that's getting into your sewer, doesn't, you know, there could be some improvement there. So that, that's the first key to note, and you'll see that here on the next slide. Recommendations for the existing system. For the south, of course, it's not over capacity. No recommendations needed. For the northwest, we recommend in twenty-twenty-two to complete two studies. A storm drainage analysis study and an INI study for, specifically for the northwest area. And these studies will hopefully chase down where the biggest issues are and develop a plan to implement remediation and ti- tighten up the sewer system to prevent that stormwater from getting in. There will be some costs to those improvements, of course, and that'll come out of these two studies. So that's the existing system, existing flows. Yes?
Sorry, just so I understand properly here. So what you're saying is currently we have infiltration into the sewer pipe, groundwater, whatever.
Yep.
That's getting in there, and that's what's putting us at these high capacities. And so this cost that's shown here, this is just so you can tell us where it's an issue and give us a rough budget on how much it's gonna cost to fix that?
Yeah. Yeah, so the northwest sewer shed, fairly big area. This will tighten it up to say, this main has, has a big hole in it and it's, and it's going in. Or this manhole is depressed, and with the runoff from the greenhouses, every time it rains, this manhole is getting flooded with stormwater runoff from the greenhouse, et cetera, et cetera.
Would greenhouses have their gutters tied into the sewer system?
Or greenhouses have their gutter tied into the sewer system, yes. Yeah.
You notice the flows are quite high even without any rain?
Correct, yes. That, that's your average day flow, and then you got the max day.
I mean, in the northwest.
In the northwest.
Yeah.
Yep, they are. They are, and that's just the, the high usage from the greenhouse. However, the greenhouse pays their sewer rate, and they're paying for those, those flows. Nobody's paying for the stormwater that gets in through the manhole.
But the argument always used to be that the greenhouse don't use water before the sewerly plants use it all.
And it could be them tying in their, their gutters into the, uh, into the sewer and going through the system tied in somehow. So there, there's a couple different ways to look at it, right? Are they actually high wastewater users? And if so, they're paying rates on it. It, maybe it's not that bad news of a story, but there's still some improvements to be made. Or is it, is it INI, actual stormwater that the town end up, ends up paying the rate for?
Yeah, because I, I can't see during a, a dry day that there should be that much flow because I don't think the greenhouse people take the water and, and wash the plants off and run the excess water down the drain.
Run it to the sewer, it's mostly a recycle system.
Process, and they're very frugal with water.
Yeah. And I can look at those numbers again. Any further question on that?
Well, I was just wondering where the wa- the water would be coming from.
Okay. Not exactly sure. It was from our calibrated model, and we did get the, the monthly sewer flows from this last year from the town. And we used that, and we got the ad, like, the, the developments on where those flows are coming from. Um, not the specific house number due to, um, privacy protection, but we did get the flows from each area and applied those to the model.
So in twenty-fifteen, we had an outfit do an INI study, right?
Mm-hmm.
And since then, I believe the town has tried a few things to slow that INI. Obviously, it hasn't worked. Like, I believe we put sealed rings. And like, so they don't have the vent holes or anything in them because, yes, otherwise storm can go in them. So in those low spots, I, I thought our crew went through and did a few of those things. Like, I guess, you know, we, our job here is to budget and, and prioritize, and we get told things are happening. And then we get told that things aren't happening. It, I don't know if there's still very high flows out there because I, I do believe that almost every grower out there will have applied for his ninety-five percent sanitary waiver. Because we do have a policy that says if you're reusing all your fir- water, you, if it's not being wasted to sanitary, you can apply and gr- be granted this subsidy. So if what you're saying is we are seeing high flows through there, I don't know. Maybe we shouldn't be granting them their subsidies because obviously somebody's not doing it then.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll have to go look at the average day flows again, the dry weather flows, um, in the greenhouse area, um, and verify that.
And I guess you'd have to be comparing it with the water flows in that same area, right?
That's right. Yeah.
How much water they're actually paying for and consuming versus, okay, they're only supposed to be discharging five percent. And so I guess that's an even important number for us. Like, if they're discharging ten percent, we need to change our.
Change the subsidy.
Bylaw, right? Cause it is a bylaw, and they apply for that subsidy, and it's granted if they prove that they're re-circling and that kind of stuff, right? But again, we don't sit there and, and watch them. We were supposed to try to monitor their sanitary lines to see who is doing what, but that seems to not quite, um, it's not worked out yet, so.
Okay? Yeah, and I understand the town does have flow meters, and that's what would be used as a part of the INI study, um, to keep some of the costs down because we've done that.
Well, they keep disappearing, so I don't know who's got them.
With several communities. Well, we confirmed with, with the, with the team, and so that's what would, we would recommend to deploy at strategic locations next spring, summer, in the melt, in the rainy season, to verify where that's coming from. And we did take that past, um, INI study and rainfall gauge data and whatnot to implement into this model and study as well. And so updated data might show that there has been some improvements as well, right? And so we don't want to do any construction work, we'll say, before we do a small study, to verify, is there still problems, where that problem is, and narrow it down. So we're, we're doing, um, it's termed micro monitoring in several other communities across North America. Specifically, one in central Alberta, the city of La Combe, we're doing a citywide program because they are on regional sewer, pumping their sewer to city of Red Deer, paying fairly high rates, and they don't want to pay for stormwater, right? So they're gonna try and chase down, and maybe there's a main that's leaking, and that will save them lots of money per year. So that's what this is intended to do. But we have used past di- data, and we would use that along with new data next spring, summer to see what the issue is, how big it is still, and where it is, to go and fix it.
Yeah. It's just, I think the point that I'm trying to make is that a greenhouse shouldn't be putting a lot of water down the sewer. So where in the world is it coming from?
Yeah, I, I have to look at those dry weather flows again.
See, when you pop a manhole over there on, on some of those streets going to the lift station, it's half full. I mean, the, the flow is coming out of half, half the flow of the plate on a dry day.
Which is significant.
Half full is overflow. Pardon me? Half full is overflow. Well, ha- half the pipe is full. Like, it's got a pretty good flow on a dry day.
Mm-hmm. I'll, I'll go on the report and look at that, and I'll loop back in with Johnny and Ahmed as well, and, uh, I can get back to Elise and Phyllis on that one. So that's the recommendations for the existing system in the existing year, twenty-twenty-one. Then on the next slide is future system recommendations, looking at still the existing infrastructure thirty years from now. So sewer shed, no population increase. From a condition, or from a capacity standpoint, no upgrades are recommended. However, there might, there will likely be condition upgrades needed as the pipe ages and degrades. B-side development, of course, is the upcoming residential development. It is recommended to tie in as many sanitary, as much of the sanitary system upstream of the existing surge tank so that the surge tank can capture and attenuate those peaks. And then if that can't happen, then it's recommended to tie it in on the Samus Drive trunk because as part of the discharge alternatives, a new surge tank could or would be installed at the corner of Samus Drive and Twentieth Street. And then for the north side development, as, um, development occurs, a lift station will be required in the north to pump the future development flows back to the city gate connection. So these are all future items to think about. And that was the existing system analysis. So component two is wastewater disposal alternatives. So through the preliminary review phase, three conveyance alternatives were looked at, and the best one was selected. Four treatment alternatives were looked at, and four treatment locations were looked at. And that forms the three alternatives here for the detailed review report. So alternative one is continued conveyance to the city of Medicine Hat wastewater treatment plant through the existing city gate connection. On the next slide, wastewater disposal alternative two is a new local wastewater treatment plant. And the, the location analysis proved out that the north location, as you can see on the screen, was the, the best location for the new plant if this alternative goes forward. And you can see a conceptual layout of the wastewater treatment plant in that corner. Site's approximately, I think, one fifty by two hundred. Call it about eight to ten acres is what the site would require. And for the wastewater treatment plant technology selection, um, four were looked at, and three were, were really close across the line. The BNR, the biological nutrient removal, the AGS being the aerobic granular sludge, and the SBR, the sequencing batch reactor were really close. Um, there's lots of detail in the preliminary review report, but we didn't go into further detail in this, um, in this one because it really takes that treatment alternative and compares it against the other two. The third one being a hybrid, um, with the town continuing to flow to the city gate connection for all the south and east flows. And then the north flows and the northwest flows would flow to a new wastewater treatment plant in the north. Get treated and then discharged to the river. So it's kind of a split treatment. That was alternative number three. So the analysis consisted of, um, looking at the risks for each of the alternatives. Um, you can see ten here listed on the screen. So the, the bigger risk, or the biggest risk with alternative one, the conveyance, is a relationship between the, the town and the city of Medicine Hat. Through the preliminary phase, town administration did talk with the city, um, and start those initial discussions about, hey, are you willing to, to look at the agreement and maybe update the agreement to a longer term agreement? Provide some rate stability for the town because that is the biggest risk. What if they come in and slap a twenty or a fifty percent increase on the rates? I know the Alberta Utility Commission would come in and, and, you know, they do have a pretty big, uh, club when it comes to that and won't allow those high increases, but that still is a risk. The bigger risks with alternative two and three, of course, building a new wastewater treatment plant, is Alberta Environment and Parks, AEP. Will they allow a new plant? Generally, AEP prefers less plants than more. If they do allow a plant, will AT come in and fund it? And then also the ever-changing effluent limit requirements, the approval limit requirements. What if they need to lower these requirements, be more stringent in this area, this area, introduce treatment for pharmaceuticals? The town owned wastewater treatment plant, the town is on the hook to do those future upgrades. So those are the bigger, bigger risks with, with the wastewater treatment plant. Costs were looked at, of course, as part of the analysis. So the net present value costs were, um, determined for all three options, and they included capital costs as well as annual operation and maintenance costs multiplied by thirty for the thirty-year design horizon. And so you can see wastewater disposal alternative one with a capital cost of just under eight point six million. Includes the surge tank and return lift station to the sewer trunk, as well as the future north lift station. A fairly major north lift station when that area develops. Annual O and M costs include the rates paid to the city of Medicine Hat. You can see this is the highest one or, uh, of the three options because of the rates, and inflation was accommodated for or included in the rates as well. So alternative one shows at twenty-six and a half million. Alternative two, you can see the very high initial capital cost of almost thirty-eight million for the new wastewater treatment plant, slightly lower O and M costs. The appendices to the report show a more detailed breakdown of how these costs were derived. So for alternative two, it's fifty million, and alternative three is about half the flows for the wastewater treatment plant because half of it still goes through the city gate connection, and it's about thirty-eight million. We'll come back to the costs, uh, well, we'll, we'll continue on with the costs here in our triple bottom line analysis. So the categories, of course, are economic, environmental, and social, and within each category, multiple factors were considered. And you can see here that alternative one does prove out with, with these factors and the weighting. And you can see here that alternative one does prove out with with these factors and weighting to each factor. As the preferred option in all three categories. I do want to note the economic, uh, under the economic factor, the funding potential. So the funding potential at thirty percent, you can see there, accommodates for. The Alberta Municipal Water Wastewater Partnership Funding. There's a calculation on the website based on the population. The town would receive forty seven percent funding or could, I should say, not would, but could receive forty seven percent funding from the government. With that thirty percent factor and the one for five for the three alternatives, that accounts for the funding. And that's proven out on the next one, which you won't be able to see too clearly, I do have handouts, but that is, we'll go back up to that slide. So that is proven out, so it does take into account the funding and it's still relatively even for economic. Environmental, alternative one wins out primarily due to performance resiliency. Once it passes city gate, it's Medicine Hat's problem to deal with. So so lots of resiliency there and regulatory. The town really doesn't have to deal with any regulatory stringencies or commitments. Again, once it crosses that, the the city has to deal with all those regulatory upgrades. For social, alternative two and three, how we have it weighted, prove out to be the better for the social, in the social category. Primarily due to the intergovernmental relations. They do not rely on the City of Medicine Hat. And we weighted that fairly heavily, as you can see, at forty percent. So I'm going to skip through this next slide and go to the triple bottom line sensitivity analysis. So where does it flip flow? What's the sensitivity to the triple bottom line? You can see the original scenario at the top. The second scenario is what if we, what if we had economic at eighty percent? None of these are really realistic, but we wanted to see kind of what, where it would tip the scales. So at economic at eighty percent, because they're so close, it really doesn't change things. Alternative one still proves out to be the best. Environmental, because alternative one was higher rated with environmental, if you bump up environmental to eighty percent. It widens that gap and becomes the best and still is the best. It's in scenario four where you wait social at eighty percent. That it doesn't, it kind of flips the alternatives or it really evens them out from our analysis. So if you go scenario four, if if the intergovernmental relations is by far the highest priority. All three options become, let's let's pick one. But it's only at that point with a heavily weighted social factor that that they become even. So if you go back one slide, I do have a handout, a limb by seventeen handout if anybody wants. To see it a little bit better, um, didn't intend to go through it in too much detail today, but I'm happy to do so. Um, you can see in blue on the screen here, it's black. Or highlighted blue here on the handout, that is with the funding, so that kind of just proves out with or without funding, the economic is the same. Or sorry, the the economic is, the funding for alternative two and three are included in the economic way. That's what I'm trying to say, I'm sorry.
Joel, we're.
Yes.
Down for a second, if you go back to uh. Page nineteen, I believe, on the triple bottom line analysis.
Yep.
The regulatory commitment on the environmental part, they're rated the highest in that particular section.
Yep.
At forty percent now. So if if uh, I think A E P would be setting the the regulations on that, right?
Yep.
So they make things more strict and costly. Ultimately, medicine's just going to download that cost on to the users being us anyways.
It depends on the agreement and currently I believe the agreement has um, with this rate. Medicine Hat will upgrade the conveyance system and the treatment system to accommodate the flows.
Oh, to no extra cost to us.
It takes off, takes the risk off of the town.
In our existing agreement, it says that?
I believe so, a capacity increase is different, if you want to increase it from a hundred and sixty five to two ten, there would be extra costs.
Right.
But at that one sixty five.
So then, I guess I don't understand why in previous years they, we just get a letter from them telling us our new and improved rate. Right? And also, I believe it's their twenty thirteen city. Study, sewer study that the province did, like the eight or nine communities together did. Where they have some huge capital cost projects coming due. And I guess. From past history, if there's capital cost going on down there. That's going to come back and show up on our bill. Even even if, like I I I can even look at it skewed and say, if if we had this hundred and sixty five liter per second capacity. And we never used it and Medicine Hat has grown to their limit, then actually they started to consume our capacity. And now if they have to expand or change and then they can pass some of those costs back to us, it's really. Not fair because the actual growth is theirs, but they can pass it on to us and and we've been. To the E U B with them before and capital costs can be transferred to a rate.
Correct. So they can't ding you with the capital cost, they can't increase the rate. And that's where it's really important to.
But.
Have an agree, have an rate agreement and have some long term stability in that.
Then I guess. Then our argument would be that those capital costs don't relate to us because we haven't changed anything. Is that what we're supposed to argue? Because starting, I think, three years ago, they started, they've eliminated like a lift station up in Creston Heights. They've upsized a whole bunch of pipe for gravity flow, they are working on the siphon across the river right now, I believe. In design stage anyway. So they're doing a whole bunch of these upgrades and they haven't come and talked to us at all.
So there's a letter from the City of Medicine, from M P E on behalf of the City of Medicine Hat from twenty fifteen. That said, at a hundred and sixty five liters a second, the town would have to pay this much. And to increase it to two twenty liters a second, the town would have to pay this much. Capital cost, but that's where I was discussing with with administration on, while I I went back and read the agreement, I don't think that's right. They they can't, from my understanding, charge a capital cost, they can increase the rate. And they should by inflation, right? Um, but the rate includes capital upgrades and wastewater treatment plant upgrades for that defined flow. And so we have not included the five million dollars in twenty fifteen, that 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 letter from the city said, hey, town. For a hundred and sixty five liters a second continued flow, you owe, you might, you're going to owe five million dollars, I I don't think that's right. So we've talked to administration and administration.
This administration, but not that administration.
This administration and they haven't had initial.
These guys don't get to say.
And they've had initial discussions with the City of Medicine Hat.
The, yeah, okay.
But that that is.
I just, I guess I have history, not discussions.
And that is one of our key recommendations is to continue those discussions with the city. To ensure that there is a long term wastewater utility agreement and some rate stability within that agreement. And potentially better define it for some of these points as well. You have more history than.
I want you to carry on, because I don't want to go deep into this. I have some questions later, but no, not right now.
Okay, so with regards to yeah, to the regulatory commitment and upgrades to the plant, I think I addressed your question, Chris? Does anybody have any questions on table three point eight, the large sheet that I handed out, which is within the report? So going forward two slides. Following the triple bottom line analysis, looking at all the technical details of the disposal alternatives and the costs. The recommended disposal solution is alternative one, continued conveyance to the City of Medicine Hat wastewater treatment plant. With at this stage, an additional surge tank of fourteen hundred cubic meters, same size as what's currently installed last year. But at a different location to capture the other portion of town flows that aren't currently flowing into the existing surge tank. This would then attenuate the flows to have the town remain within that a hundred and sixty five liters a second. There's some other smaller piping required and there's a lift station would be required in the north when that development comes. The site layout for the surge tank, there's a couple of different locations, bit hard to see on the screen. Um, it looks like this, um, we would propose. One surge tank alongside the other interconnected with a return lift station, which really is a pump and a manhole to get it back into the wastewater main. And there would still be a main running beside it, very similar setup to what's installed, the existing surge tank. Um, there is a parcel of land from the current A S P that's ongoing, there's a parcel of land by a uh, an abandoned gas well, I believe, at the corner of Samus Drive and Twentieth Street. That this would be a good spot for because you can't develop in there anyways.
And and the reason why you need that lift station is because the diameter of the pipe puts you below the existing sanitary. So it can flow in, but then the drop, because you got to keep it below grade, right?
That's right, it did, the grades don't quite work, it's too flat, yeah.
Blows the bottom end off for coming out at the south.
Yeah, because in order to use the capacity of the surge tank, you got to match upwards, not in.
Yes, I I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. So you got to come in at the same, at the top of the pipe and since the pipe is only this small and then the surge tank is this big, you got to pump it back up in.
In the future, is this a daily event? Or is this a once in, a rain event?
This is typically a rain event.
Because the diurnal flows.
Yeah.
Peak a couple of times a day, right?
Yep, it would handle, it would, the the, I believe the one sixty five in future years would handle the max day flow. Which handles the 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 peak dry weather, sorry, the peak dry.
So that it would be, it would handle the diurnal flows at on dry.
Yep.
So anytime it rained.
Yep.
That, unless it rained when, of course, say at ten in the morning when nobody was flushing. It would not, it wouldn't sneak through.
That's right. And in current, it wouldn't necessarily be used at all because you saw that peak wet weather is a hundred and sixty one in twenty twenty one. Right? Big storms, it would still be used. Um, and then yes, in the thirty year design horizon, um, typical dry weather flows would not surge. And that's what that, the paralleling trunk main beside the surge tank would be sized only to accommodate a certain amount of flow. So that it wouldn't over, wouldn't go over the one sixty five liters a second.
Okay.
It would be necked down to only allow certain and then it's a weir, so it's not an operational. And it's not operationally intense, it would, it only allows, I think, a hundred liters a second here, maybe sixty through the the other one. And then if it goes over that, it would go over the weir.
So we don't need to send someone out in the storm and turn a gate down?
No.
Yeah, because that's actually the big pipe, right, that was the thirty inch pipe that you're talking. There's a thirty inch pipe with two eighteen's coming into it or something in your design. So you'll be restricting the thirty inch pipe?
Yes, oh yeah, 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 the seven fifty or the seven hundred, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, confused me there for a bit.
I'm old.
Yes, we'd be restricting that down to, is it a two fifty? Or three, three seventy five?
There was some three seventy fives in there.
Yeah.
Fourteen and a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, but that would just be done with an orifice, like a restrictive plate.
Well, the pipe would be the orifice and so I actually challenged Johnny and Ahmed on this, would we put an orifice, well, not really recommended. You get a board wedged up in there or, I mean, it could happen to a pipe, but.
Yeah, same thing.
Kind of the same thing, yes, yes, but um, it wouldn't be an orifice, it would just be that pipe would only allow that flow into it.
Okay.
You wouldn't have a sluice gate half open or an orifice, it would just be that pipe. Yeah. Order magnitude budget specifically for alternative one, broken down in a little bit more detail. There's really two scopes with it, the, we'll call it the immediate scope is that surge tank and return, small return lift station. You can see um, with engineering contingency totals at five point two million. And then in the future, a north side lift station would be required to collect that north sanitary flow and pump it back to the city gate connection. Key schedule milestones would be to. Refine the master plan if if and as needed and perform a conceptual design. And really the basis to this is furthering those discussions with the City of Medicine Hat. And so. If they come back and say, well, no, we can't provide any rate certainty, well, then we might have to look at this in a little bit more detail. But really it's having those discussions and maybe they're open to increasing their discharge limit to two ten liters a second. Then the town doesn't need to install a surge tank. The town would need to put in then for conveyance upgrades within the city, but they wouldn't need to, you guys wouldn't need to install a surge tank. So it's really before going in and, well, let's, let's go to design next month, well, let's. You know, let's refine the master plan, let's talk with the city, let's make sure we're doing the right thing before we jump in with two feet. Then potentially next year, um, the town would budget for design and construction with the design to go February twenty twenty three. Uh, early twenty twenty three in construction, summer twenty twenty three. This could be accelerated, easily design it early next year if desired by the town or push it back. And um, if the town wishes to proceed with another alternative, another option. You have the full right to do so and static will support you along the way. So the next steps, as we discussed, this is a recap on the existing system, there's two studies to complete. As we mentioned, the storm drainage analysis and the I N I study to see if we can, to see where that extra twenty liters a second is coming from. And to see if it's an easy or to see what it would take to fix. And on the wastewater disposal, we talked about the master plan refinement, conceptual design, further the the discussions with the City of Medicine Hat, of course. For that long term agreement, for that rate stability and maybe even to increase the peak discharge rate. And then budget for the recommended alternative. That concludes my presentation today, open the floor for any additional questions.
Well, the one question I have and I can't get my head around it is when you're doing thirty year pro- projection. You talk about inflation, but yet in your chart, you use the same. I believe the same rate of sixty eight cents a cubic meter or something through the whole. Term and by using that number, you come up with. The projected number that makes staying with the city the right choice, right? You come up with that seventeen million six hundred and two. Right? And I guess that's where I struggle, I struggle to believe that. That rate will stay that way, I just don't have faith. And if that rate goes up to a dollar or more. And we're sending them eight hundred thousand cubic meters a year. That seventeen six could turn out to be thirty million. And then when you add it all together, then some of the other options may have looked better. Because some of those other options, as much as there's risk, there's also stability in that we have control like. And and even the argument of a little plant. That just handles the north or a big plant that handles the whole town, I look at it operationally. Yes, the size is different and the cost is totally different, but when it actually comes to staffing and manpower, it wouldn't be different. It probably takes the same one or two guys for the small one or the big one. It probably takes the same one or two guys for the small one or the big one. Because there's still a computer involved, right?
Correct.
Right, and then somebody gets put on standby somewhere far, far away to run the computer, if that even changes.
And you still need a level three operator.
There's a whole bunch of, there's a whole bunch of variables that can move here, and. I don't know.
Yes, I think we we got the table up, and I did, I did see the same thing, and I and I actually asked this very same question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
If you see the the column one beside, we did calculate the utility rate with inflation. So it's third from the right, and that is what's used in the calculation. And so you can see in twenty twenty-five, it goes up to seventy-five cents a liter, and and I think in thirty years, it is close to a dollar if we scroll down. Dollar twenty-four, so that is the number that's calculated in in the rate.
And then in the same token, you have to be lowering our flows. Because I believe right now our flows are probably at a buck.
So I think it's one, with one table, one table up, I believe, this is alternative three.
And I know you talk about somewhere that as we become more efficient with our water, then. The the effluent ratios change with solids and liquids, and it becomes different too, but I I don't know, like. There are years, I believe, we probably, like, right now, we probably are in the seven to eight hundred thousand cubes a year, are we not?
Sorry, that the annual flow?
Yeah.
Is is right around two thousand right now. Meter, sorry, not, no, yeah, that's right, sorry, that's per day.
Yes.
Times three sixty-five, sorry, apologize.
Because I think our bills to the city. Are somewhere around the five fifty to six hundred thousand a year, are they not, in in our sewer, in our budgeting?
Yeah, so you can see that the total sewer flow is is there in that column there, so. Current year, it's two thousand, and projected, it's it's supposed, it's thirty-two hundred meters cube per day is projected. So at the thirty-two, if you go to line thirty, year thirty, projected to be thirty-two hundred cubic meters a day at a rate of a dollar twenty-four. Provides the O and M costs. Both the utility statement and also the net present value.
So if I'm taking the column, let's just go to thirty years, that's the hundred and sixty, that's a one million one hundred and sixty-six thousand cubes?
Meters, per year, yeah, cubic meters per year.
Per year, at a dollar twenty-four?
Yep.
How can it be less than a million, how can it be eight hundred thousand dollars? Do you know what I mean? Like, that should be twelve, eleven times eleven is one twenty-one, so add another eleven. That's one thirty-two. So. That math is out. That should be one point three some million. I don't know.
One point four four?
No, that's twelve times twelve.
One million four hundred and forty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-three.
Just saying, I don't know, I I was looking at that, and and I'm not an engineer, so. And I just couldn't figure it all out, because it should be straight arithmetic.
Yes, and I'll check that as well.
Is that that number goes on?
To verify where the, where the inflation rate is added, I will check that.
Then it, okay, but then that's thirty-seven million, and that's not the number used, it's seventeen million. Which is that seventeen six oh one, that's the one that you pulled up into here.
I'd have to check if the inflation is applied somewhere else.
Some, I think, so I think that arithmetic needs straightening up, math, let's say it's math.
Utility statement number is the point sixty-five times one million one hundred and sixty-six thousand cubes equals seven ninety-eight point thirty. So they targeted by the sixty-eight cents of the dollar twenty-four.
And I believe. I will confirm, but I believe this is the net present value analysis. And so it's based on today, for comparative purposes, the net present value, and today, the rate is sixty-eight five. But I will confirm and get a better detailed explanation.
And I don't even know if it is that, if it is, that almost seems low to me, but I don't know anything, I thought he was an old man, and here he isn't, so.
And in the current agreement, it it is, but then you do end up paying a bit every year.
Right, and and like I say, I'm just struggling, because what we're trying to do is make sure that whatever path we start out with tomorrow. Is a path we stay on. And a path that still, we can look back after thirty years and say we did the right thing.
Absolutely, and that's why.
And I don't even care thirty years, I would say even fifteen years, did we still do the right thing?
Two years.
Because I I'm not going to hold anybody to thirty years out, because I won't care.
And that's why it's recommended not to rush into the design, let's take twenty twenty-two to refine it, to talk with the city. And make sure we're doing the right thing, that's, you bring up a really good point.
Well, it's just, you did mention this was your final report, I wrote it down, and I'm going, I hope not. I'm hoping there's still some tweaking.
There is, but still tweaking.
Okay.
This is not for you to adopt tonight.
No, no. We're just receiving it for information, or the update for information, is that the motion that somebody's going to do? Nobody did, oh, because he was just doing his. Okay, does anybody else have more questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Yes. With scenario two, I'm just reading off this here. And if this is purely, purely curiosity, it says here potential for reuse of all wastewater generated from the town, what would that water be used for? Like, what could we use that water for?
It's a secret.
If it's treated? It could be used for golf course irrigation, crop irrigation. Those types of things, potentially greenhouse irrigation.
And that was the other question I had. Because you guys picked the old standard as the best one to go with. Even though that does have the largest footprint, right, of any of the, I think, from what I read anyway, the.
As far as the treatment technologies?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
It takes the lo, it's the largest footprint, right, like any of your, if you went to a filter system, or or a sequential batch, or even that other one that you're talking about that's coming in. They're all smaller built, like, some of those are built inside of cities, right, like multi-story, they look like apartment blocks, but they're really not. And yes, we have lots of land out there. But do they put out as good a quality effluent as the sequential batch or even that new technology? Is the water as good, like, when it comes to using, because I was also, maybe things have changed over the years, but at one time, you know, we looked at. Things like snow fluent and even irrigating crops, it, I was told that you can only do that so much before you have to take a break. Just because of, there is some impurities.
Right.
In there, and then you can start risking hurting the land, now, I don't know, maybe, maybe the technologies of all these treatment plants have improved. And and there would be no consequence.
So there's continually, continuous improvement on all technologies. The BNR plant, biological nutrient removal plant, is the most widely used technology in Alberta and probably Canada. And so if AEP comes in and and introduces a standard that a BNR plant couldn't meet, they wouldn't be able to keep up with the upgrades. They went through this with lagoons a while ago to say, oh, your lagoon, all these lagoons need to be, need a receiving water quality assessment, and they need to be upgraded, well. There's all these smaller municipalities that can't afford a new, a lagoon upgrade, and so they, then they go to AT, so AEP sets a standard. And AT, AT needs to come with a bag of money, it it doesn't quite align, right, but to your, your question, a BNR plant is very robust and widely used. And there are add-ons to that, such as a UV reactor at the end, that will enhance treatment as the standards become more stringent as well.
Yeah, because there is, there is a possibility of reusing out there, but.
Yep.
It would also have to be a fairly clean water, too. Okay, Larry, sorry.
Did we test the quality of our effluent right now, like, is it high in phosphates and or nutrients or sulfates? Or is it, is it good, it's, it doesn't have any anomalies?
We did not test it, it wasn't in the scope of this study, of this master plan study, but that is something I believe the operators could do. And I I didn't see an over strength charge in the agreement, typical agreements have, and it it might be in there, but that's something to. To just remind us about as well.
Because that would be a consideration. If the effluent would be high in nutrients like nitrogen and stuff like that, it's hard to get it over. And that could be a possibility with our greenhouse.
The fertilizers getting washed through or those types of things, yeah.
So we should almost know what we're dealing with as well.
Yeah, if if the city cares, I guess, if you, if you go through, and typical, like, the city Red Deer I know is is. Accepts a lot of other wastewater, and they have an over strength charge, you have to meet these requirements in your raw wastewater, or else your bill over strength. And the the city, the receiving plant, will typically test for that, will tell the municipalities if they're over strength on a certain category or not. For example, Red Deer has a meatpacking plant, they need to do pre-treatment before sending it to the treatment plant, or else they get dinged with huge over strength charges, and so. I don't believe that's come up between Red Cliff and City Medicine Hat, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the town wants to bring it up.
They did say that our sewage was high in nutrients.
Okay.
So I don't know if it is or not.
Yeah, sometimes that's not a bad thing for reuse, you can reuse the liquids, as well as you can reuse the solids as well. And that, and that's becoming a big thing as well.
Think we're dwindling on the question. So would somebody like to move or receive Joel's presentation or information? Chris? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you very much for having me, I'll jot down a few questions, and I'll follow up with Elise and Phyllis, thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
All right. Council minutes held November eighth, twenty twenty-one for adoption. Matt? Any questions or concerns, errors, something else we didn't do? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And the Riverview Golf Club meeting held October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one for information, Chris? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. All right. Bylaws, we're bylaw nineteen thirty-one slash twenty twenty-one being the temporary borrowing bylaw, and it's here for all three readings. And it's a pretty normal thing that we do every year, just for the new people. It's only good for a year, right, so we do it every year. And I don't think we've ever had to use it. Larry, first reading? So does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried, and would somebody like to present, Kathy, for a second? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried, and would somebody like to present it for third? James, and that must be unanimous to go forward, so all in favor? Opposed, that is unanimous, and then somebody move third. Matt? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, moving on. Requests for decisions, we have the strategic plan from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. For consideration.
Put it on the table with option number one.
Uh-uh, I'm for old. Okay, Kathy?
Proof is presented.
All right, any questions or concerns? It could be my computer. Oh, sorry, Matt, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I just, I do see a grammar error, in case, that should be on page eight of it. It says, over the next few year, the town will focus. I think maybe that should be plural. Goal, and it's under goal to economic development.
What did you do?
I noticed that too last night.
It's actually page ten on the iPad here, but. Is that the only one that I, I thought there was?
That I picked up on, so.
Okay, no, I know there was one in there, and I didn't fill ten it, so now I'm huge. Okay, let's hope that that was good. Okay. Any other questions, concerns? So, Phyllis?
Yes.
When you talk about. Keeping our staff. Right, that's a goal or a strategy?
Yes.
Staff retention.
It's not the first time we've tried that.
This is, these are your exact goals out of your last plan, that you guys have all agreed to?
It hasn't been working so well.
We are working on on a strategy, you've started, you've done good.
Okay.
Claire is working on on the human resource plan that involves education and other things, but yes, council has. Made a step, and and we continue to work towards that. Handcuffs, too.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on these? Okay, Kathy made the motion, all in favor? Opposed?
That says amended, correct, sir?
Okay, with that one spelling error, yes, sorry. Okay. It's carried, as amended, all right, correspondence, thank you from Halo. Information? Matt? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried, and then from the Libraries Association of Alberta.
Received information.
Kathy? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then. A letter from Velma Penncoast. Somebody like to move, we received that for information? Or?
James said he's.
Did he? Okay, James?
That wasn't a scratch in my head.
It's not an auction sale, kind of actually.
Then why did she scratch your head?
Yeah, well, I don't get to make motions, so I can do that. Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
So, third question, I read it the other night, now it's blurry on my screen now, so I don't remember exact details, but. What does she want for this photo again, she wants his name mentioned?
On something.
I I believe Velma has written similar letters to this in the past, and. Like, she was a longtime resident of Red Cliff and and knows, and has history of some of these people, and I think. What she's seen is some streets or places get named, parks, whatever. And she thinks that some of these other people are more worthy, and and so she's encouraging us to. And she thinks that some of these other people are more worthy and, and so she's encouraging us to at least recognize them and put their name on the list, so if something is coming up.
The list probably grows quicker than the development.
Yeah, well, I think Shannon couldn't find the list. Phyllis?
Do you recall a list, sir?
I have seen a list, but I also know that I sit on the museum board. And at one time, there could have been a list compiled there. So I'm not gonna say I saw a list here. Because Velma was a member of the museum and Cliff Dacre and, and they did go through and bring up some historical names, right? Even back at the seventy-fifth and, and so that's unfortunately twenty-seven years ago now, right? So that list might be harder to find. Cause I think that's when the list was done, for the seventy-fifth. I'm not, and like I say, that's, we're a hundred and two now or something, so it's, it's, you know, we're more than that. Yeah, oh my goodness, yeah, we're a hundred and twelve.
Gerald just passed away and I think Frank has been gone for twenty-five years or more, right?
No, no, he hasn't been gone that long. But, but Gerald was just a month or so ago, yeah.
I did Google both of them, cause I've never heard these names before and especially Frank, you can find a lot about him on.
Was his dad taught at Parks? The old school.
His dad or did he?
His dad.
Oh, okay, cause I read, yeah, I saw Principal Parksite on there and then the Order of Canada and so. But it's in, I, I, I just love history, so I just checked it out, so.
The name get what, on a list?
Yeah.
So would you care to have a friendly amendment to start a list, if we can't find the old one?
Absolutely.
So you're moving for information and directing someone to make a list or find the list?
Yeah.
And then maybe at some point talk about ideas on the computer.
Could be as simple as a monument somewhere.
Yeah.
And religion.
Ways to work out, huh? Um.
Ways to work out, right, yeah. Like the back room.
Like Gerald, for people that don't know, is the, is the one who after we had Jim do this mural, he's the one that had Jim draw it up and made the two hundred copies that you can buy. And then the money's supposed to go to the museum as a block sell. And that was done up quite a while ago too, right? Just for some of you guys that wouldn't even know that.
Yeah, never heard of it before. How many blocks do we have left?
I don't know.
Hundred and ninety-nine. More, more than a couple?
No, more, I think there's more than, more than a couple, but no, some of them did sell. They sold good at the start, right? And then, then it waned. Yes, and he is the one that together with some other ones started a scholarship for the grade twelve Red Cliff kids. There was a group of them, but he was definitely a part of that.
Yeah, that was, that was brought to us about two years ago and I know it's my name was on the list, I don't remember, don't need to do it.
Your mom probably did it for you.
No, my mom doesn't like kids, I'm proof of that.
Okay. Yeah, but it's just our new area is all M's, right, so unless that switches somewhere along the lines.
Mister or Mrs.?
Yeah. Okay, okay. Well, anyway, James made the motion. Any other comments, concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Other project reports? For information, Larry? Any questions or concerns?
I.
There's a flat ground there and it's fenced already.
So the majority of the work's done right now. Uh, Elise has put out the tender for the bins and the removal. But we still have, uh, substantial completion to award and hold back forty-two days and so we'll, that'll drift us into, into the new year. So mostly administrative processes.
But there could be bins there this year.
Yes, there will be bins there this year.
That doesn't affect our grant money in any way, shape or form?
Nope. We already have that. Yeah, the only thing might be, I don't know, is that hole, that's supposed to look like that, the storm?
Just a little bit of landscape.
Yeah, that looked a little crude, but the rest of it looked better.
With some riffraff in that?
Some riffraff? We don't want you in the bottom of that hole, Larry. Okay.
I wasn't thinking of myself.
Matt?
Um, I know we talked about this, um, shortly after the election, but it was brought to, I think there was a question was asked about, about it today. The, the pool, that's a stor- just a strictly a storage unit that's being built beside it, correct?
The, uh, building beside the existing one is a storage unit.
Okay.
And then there's work being done inside the existing building to create two washrooms that can be accessed from the pool deck directly.
Okay, yeah, cause folks I talked to today, they're like, oh, they're supposed to put sewer in those, that extension or something like that. I'm like, I'm not sure. And I said, I don't think so, but.
No, the sewer stuff is inside the existing building.
Okay, so now if they ask again, which they probably will, I can clarify that.
They're converting the old storage room into bathrooms that skate park people can access.
Okay.
Right, cause that's, there already is sewer in that building.
Yeah.
And then the other garage being built is storage ground, so no, no water in there at all.
Okay.
And then there's a storm, of course, in the skateboard park out, but everybody should know that, cause the hole at the bottom. Yeah, that way, I think you're heating it, but it doesn't have to be heated, right?
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the Alberta Provincial Police Service Transition Study for information.
Information.
Kathy? So they're coming to town in person?
That is what the letter said, yes.
Yeah, it's just I see they're doing some in person and some virtual, so.
Yes, Madison Hades.
Okay.
For in person.
And he's gonna discuss all three of those?
I couldn't tell you what he's doing.
Yeah, you're right, you don't know. Okay.
I heard this guy's very monotone voice.
You didn't hear him?
You heard it speak today.
He's the one who you were sleeping.
Said, I heard his very monotone voice while I was reading this letter.
Oh, I thought it was like.
It almost put me to sleep again.
So if we want a spot, should we let you know now?
I have, I have enough spots for all of council, you just need to let me know.
Okay.
Come in.
I'll take one. I love hearing one thought.
Yep.
It's nice that it's in the morning.
Yeah.
Sleepy in the morning.
And who has the T-shirt? Just James, you have one too?
Okay, I got one.
You got one too?
From the, from the A U M E?
Wear the T-shirts to this meeting?
No, 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 to that meeting, yeah, not this meeting. I got one from the police federation or.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
What did the shirt say? We support or something?
Keep Alberta R C N P dot C A.
Forget those from the.
It was Trachill, the Trachill.
I asked her to explain to me why first.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? I think, uh, we have two more meetings before that, right?
Just number. Yeah, yeah, probably three.
You guys have two.
Who are you?
Someone?
Well.
Anyway, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And important meetings and events. Larry? Did it, did we miss any?
No, but we will have at the next meeting, the office closures over Christmas.
No, those are just, those are just legit days. Okay. Questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Do we need a recess? And.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Okay, five minute recess.